The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortmann. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Krusen. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Krusen. Twenty-four, present.
Our quorum being present, we would be led today in prayer by Dr. Reverend Doris Ann Graham, who is also a Delta and a Soro. And you know today is Delta Day.
Thank you. Could we all please bow our heads for a word of prayer? Our Father who art in heaven, how will be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come before your throne of grace first of all to say thank you. Oh God, thank you for a brand-new day, one that we've never seen before. We ask you right now, oh God, to continue to bless President Louis Reed and the St. Louis Board of Aldermen. Bless all elected officials everywhere, oh God, and continue to give them the strength and the wisdom and the knowledge to do the good things for the communities for which they represent. Oh God, we thank you for Delta Sigma Theta being here today and all other visitors. We ask that you let your Holy Spirit reign supreme, and all things will be done decently and in order and to your glory. We thank you right now in Jesus' name, amen.
As a great pair, Dr. Graham, we're gonna have to have you back and do prayers for us again. I appreciate the prayer. Special order of the day, Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize?
Thank you, good morning, members of the Board. The Committee of Engrossment Rules Resolution and Credentials have met and report that we have considered the qualification of the following individual and find that she is qualified to hold the office of Alderwoman, Ms. Beth Murphy.
Alderwoman Elect Beth. And I think Judge Murphy is here also. Oh, there he is. Would you like to bring your husband up with you? Yeah, come on.
Up here?
Yeah, we need you on this side.
Oh, on this side.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth Murphy.
I, Elizabeth Murphy.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Of the City of St. Louis.
In the State of Missouri.
The State of Missouri.
Having been elected by the qualified voters.
Having been elected by the qualified voters.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Of the City of St. Louis.
To the position of Member of the Board.
To position of Member of the Board.
Of Aldermen from the 13th Ward.
Of Aldermen from the 13th Ward.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Of the City of St. Louis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
And am not subject to any of the disqualifications.
And am not subject to any of the disqualifications.
Named in the Charter.
Named in the Charter.
For the office or employment.
For the office or employment.
I am about to assume.
I am about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city.
That I will be influenced only by.
That I will be influenced only by.
The consideration.
The consideration.
Of fitness and of the appointment.
Fitness and of the appointment.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Demotion.
Demotion.
Suspension or discharge.
Suspension or discharge.
Of officers or employees.
Of officers or employees.
That I will not expend.
That I will not expend.
Nor authorize the expenditure.
Nor authorize the expenditure.
Of money otherwise.
Of money otherwise.
Than for the adequate consideration.
For the adequate consideration.
And efficient service to the city.
And efficient service to the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now I gotta go sit down. Now I get to go thank you.
In fact, we have to pin you first. Alderman from the... This is the floor leader, Alderman from the 17th.
Oh, somebody said I got...
You got good eyes.
I understand, I understand. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortmann. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Krusen. President Reed. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Krusen. Twenty-six, present.
Quorum being present, we will continue with our regularly... Our regular agenda, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the 13th.
President Reed and members of the Board, I would like to introduce as my honored guests, first of all, my husband, Tim. Patient and sweet. And my beautiful daughter Erin. Stoff. And the lights of my life, Nigel Stoff, who is soon to graduate from St. Rock and was accepted and is looking forward to going to St. Mary's High School. And Luke is completing second grade at St. Rock. And Kira Stoff is completing kindergarten. And she now reads her bedtime stories to us. So it's very exciting. And then also, I have, before anybody has to leave, I said that my nephew, Judge Joe Murphy, who swore me in. And I have my two... Two of my dear sisters are here, Catherine Stanger and Joan Mayo. And her husband Clarence. And let's see, I have in my niece and godchild, Professor Chris Rollins, who teaches law at that little law school down the street.
Okay.
And I also am... I'm honored to have... I... We affectionately call them the Outlaws, my daughters. Father and mother-in-law, Tom and Chris Stoff. And I also have as my honored guest and dear friend, Michelle Crackie, Representative Michelle Crackie and her husband Fred, Farmer Representative. And another dear friend and Representative Jake Hummel and his soon-to-be bride, Sarah. And my sister-in-law, Marilyn, and I think we all know my brother-in-law, the sheriff. I think that's it. I didn't forget anybody. I said, I think Pat Artman came over and I thank you, fellow committee woman. And Kathy Gamache.
Well, welcome to the Board of Aldermen. And I'll tell you what, I for one, I am very excited about having an opportunity to work with you. I've had an opportunity to work with you out in the community on other things. And it's your personality and your drive and everything and your sense of humor and, you know, your attention to detail that's gonna really help this Board of Aldermen as a whole. So, you know, I'm looking forward to working with you and very, very excited about your tenure. And to your family, you know, the Murphys, you guys are a political family, so you know how much time it's gonna require. We'll try to make sure you... We can not keep you out too late on some of these things, but I am so excited to have you here. And to Judge Murphy, thanks for all your work over at the courts. You performed well and I think we're lucky... We're a lucky city to have you, you know, in that stead at the courts at the City of St. Louis. Let's give them one more round of applause. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to extend a welcome to our new colleague from the 13th Ward. It's been a pleasure having you as a friend over the years and I look forward to working with you as a colleague down here. Also welcoming the Murphy and Stoff families and the Crackies and the Hummels and Ms. Wood, soon to be Mrs. Hummel, and the ladies from Delta. It's awesome to have you guys down here always. I love seeing the sea of red down here whenever you visit. I also would like to make an introduction for my special guest, Mr. Winston Calvert, who is the new City Councilor for the City of St. Louis. He's a week into his new role and has hit the ground running and is already taking meetings and I think trying to write a new policy memo on speed bumps in the City of St. Louis, if I'm not mistaken. That's a joke. Alderman French gets that. Anyways, I would like to have him here today as my special guest. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I too would like to welcome our newest colleague, Alderwoman Murphy. Very excited about our 11th member of the Women's Caucus, so... So, and welcome to all her guests. Today I'd like to introduce as my special guest, Brian Williams from our esteemed Congressman Clay's office, First District. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, President Reed. I would like to also welcome Alderwoman Beth Murphy. We've worked together for a long time as committee women in neighboring wards. I hope this relationship continues and we can partner on many projects that are needed in the South Side. It's great to have you aboard. Also, I would like to have as my special guest today, Demetrius Alfred from Local 73, that is also housed in the beautiful 14th Ward, endowed by the Bevo, and Senator Kennedy, 14th Ward Committeeman. Thank you.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of Board. I'd like to have as my esteemed guests this morning, Mr. Keith Taylor, Paul Higgins, Jeff Hans with the Carpenters District Council, and Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
Alderwoman from the 23rd.
Yes, I'd also like to welcome Beth. And just so you know, they don't always clap for you. They may start booing later. But I would also like to have as my special guest, Maureen from the Realtors, Joe Steiger from the Police, Percy Green III from Fire, Abram Pruitt Jr. from Fire.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to welcome also the Alderwoman from the 13th. And to let the four men who sit in the first row know that we're giving notice that this is gonna become a female-dominated first row. In fact, it already has. And also, I would like to welcome the Deltas, and particularly, there are two members of the First Ward that used to be the 20th Ward that are here. And I want to say my great friend Joyce Kirk is here from Northland, and my great friend Susan LaGrone is here from Lexington. Welcome, Deltas, and welcome especially First Ward residents.
Alderwoman from the 13th.
Yes, Mr. President, Board, I would also like to recognize Sarah Wessels as my honored guest in the back. She helped me tremendously in my campaign. And Gary Stoff helped me a lot from the Board of Elections and I see him sitting over there.
All right, excellent. Alderman from the 3rd.
Mr. President and members of the Board, I'd like to welcome as my special guest today, Ms. Jasmine Green, who's the management of the Management Studios, whatever that means. She's here.
Alderman from the 9th. Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Of course, someone beat me to it, but I'd like to have for my honored guest my committee woman and my wife, and she does everything for me. I couldn't do this without her. I think they left after Beth got sworn in. But I'd like to have her for my honored guest. And of course, the old committee man, Ronnie Hour over here, that's with us weekly. And also, we have Police Officer Laurie Wazanek. That's here also.
Alderwoman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would also like to offer congratulations to our new Alderwoman Murphy and my 16th Ward residents, Michelle and Fred Crackie, and David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipefitters.
Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Mr. President, without being redundant, there's a lot of my good friends seated immediately to my right and I welcome each and every one of them. The Murphy family has been making contributions for as long as I've been alive and we hope that they continue to do that. And I say that because the sheriff's one of the few people in the room older than me. Mr. President, having said that, I would like to also welcome my next-door neighbors. They've only been there maybe... How long? They've been there a year and I've only turned them in for noise and weeds twice. But the House Minority Leader, Jake Hummel and his fiancee, Sarah, are delightful people. They're living in the house that I grew up in. He promised me if they found that box of money, he'd give it to me, so... But anyway, Jake does a yeoman's job for us in the Missouri General Assembly. And it, believe me, having been completely on the other side of that, he doesn't have much to work with. He is indeed in an extreme minority in terms of Democratic membership. And as a result of that, what he does isn't easy. And I keep reading his pithy quotes and I just wish once in my life I could come up with one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning again, Mr. President, members of Board. I'd like to add to my honor roll of special guests and esteemed constituent mine, who is also a Delta, if she will stand, Ms. Michelle Price, and all the Deltas. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I, instead of having the rules followed and have all those who are not special guests go upstairs in the balcony, all of you that their names have not been called are my special guests today. So you don't have to worry about it. But I have the Stoff Brothers, I have the Mavis of the License Collector's Office, my friend sitting next to Mavis. Just all of you are special guests to us today and welcome to the Board of Aldermen. Rich Gray over in the corner. Leroy, your name has been called, so I wanted to call you again. And the Stoff Brothers and Darrell Oliver, who is a promoter supreme. God bless.
Alderwoman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Leonard Johnson from the Treasurer's Office. He's also a 6th Ward resident, as well as Al from Firefighters. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As we venture into the land of Mother's Day weekend here on May 19th, let us not forget that this is Peter Pan Day. Peter Pan, written by a Scottish author, J.M. Barrie, born in 1860, wrote the story of a mischievous little imp who never grows up and lives in Neverland, otherwise known as the Joe Vaccaro Story. But I mention this because today I have the guest who inspired the story for him and who invented the word pixie dust, Mr. Pixie Dust himself, Fred Stephan.
That was a nice recovery, Joe. All right. We... The Deltas, we welcome you here and we have a resolution for you in a few minutes when we get to that place in the agenda. So thank you so much for coming out today. Delta Days is one of our favorite days at the Board of Aldermen, so thank you for coming out today. With that... Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President. I move that we approve the minutes of the April 25th, 2014 Board Meeting.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 6th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Report of City officials.
Report of City officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
With dispensal line items, 7 through 11, first reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderman Cohn and ordinance to repeal Chapter 15.86 of the St. Louis Vice Code relating to fortune tellers. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving the petition of owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district establishing the Grand Center Area 2 Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Grand Center Area 2 Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 57, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving the petition of owner of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the Sweetie Pies Community Improvement District and finding a public purpose for the establishment of Sweetie Pies Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of any consideration the sum of $2,700 of quick claim deed unto Sunlight Properties LLC, whose address is 15280 Clayton Road, Baldwin, Missouri, certain city-owned property located in City Block 3792, which property is known by address 5279 Page Boulevard. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Legislation Committee. Board Bill 55, and to the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bills 56, 57, and 58, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill Number 10, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from a single-family dwelling district and F neighborhood commercial district to the F neighborhood commercial district only in City Block 6316 for property on Hampton Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 11, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from J Industrial District to the F neighborhood commercial district in City Block 2268 and 2276.04 for properties on McKay Place, Missouri, and Shoto and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 27, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance pertaining to parking within the 1,100 block of Taylor Avenue Residential Parking District and containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Following bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill Number 25, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and President Reed and ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for deposit in its general revenue fund for the calendar year ending December the 31st, 2014, and remaining uncollected and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in the general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line item 15, perfection consent.
Board Bill Number 4, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and ordinance extending Paragraph G of Section 2 of Ordinance 63483 as extended by Ordinance 66317. In lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted extending the period of time during which the Washington Place Special Business District shall be permitted to collect the tax within the boundaries of the district therein established and containing an effective date, effectiveness, and emergency clause. As Board Bill Number 5, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Washington Place Special Business District, a proposal to continue the levy of a tax on the real property located in said district for 10 years, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at a general election on August 5th, 2014, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 6, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and ordinance extending Paragraph G of Section 2 of Ordinance 63479 as extended by Ordinance 66318. In lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted extending the period of time during which the Waterman Lake Special Business District shall be permitted to collect tax within the boundaries of the district and containing effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill Number 7, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Waterman Lake Special Business District, designated in Ordinance 63479, a proposal to continue the levy of tax on real property located in said district for a period of 10 years, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at the general election on August 5th, 2014, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 8, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and ordinance extending Paragraph G of Section 2 of Ordinance 63481 as extended by Ordinance 66316. In lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted and extending the period of time during which the Westminster Lake Special Business District shall be permitted to collect tax within the boundaries of the district and containing effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill Number 9, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusen and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Westminster Lake Special Business District, as designated in Ordinance 63481, a proposal to continue the levy of a tax on the real property located in said district for 10 years, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at a general election on August 5th, 2014, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line items 17 through 20, I move for adoption of our current resolution count. I'll entertain a second on... Alderman from the 17th.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I move for adoption of our current resolution count. I'll entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 1st. Alderman from the 1st elect approach the dials.
What's the number? What's the number? Mr. President, members of the Board.
First of all, I want to say how honored I am to have all these beautiful women standing besides, beside me and behind me. Um, Delta Days at St. Louis City Hall, I want to thank the President for doing this. This is really important. Um, I'm not a member of any sorority, but today I'm going to make myself an honorary Delta.[624.58][624.58](laughter) And I would like to read this, uh, resolution. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13th, 1913, by 22 visionary women at Howard University. And whereas since that day, for over 100 years, Delta members have been actively involved in almost every major social movement in the United States. And whereas the first public act performed by the Deltas founders involved their participation in the historic Women's Suffrage March in Washington, DC during March of 1913. And whereas originally chartered as Lambda Sigma, the St. Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta has been committed to public service for over 90 years. And whereas every Delta uses her influence for the enactment of laws to protect the unfortunate and for the repeal of those laws which deprive human beings of their privilege and rights. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta is increasingly involved in important issues at the local, state, and federal level, and global issues, and recently received special, uh, status with the United Nations. And whereas on the Friday, May 9th, 2014, Deltas from throughout the St. Louis metropolitan area will gather to celebrate the annual Delta Days at the St. Louis City Hall. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize and to honor the St. Louis Alumni's Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And we thank them for their tireless effort on behalf of the citizens of this community. And we direct the clerk of this board to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution to the end that it may be presented to our honorees at a time and a place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce, introduce this 9th, 9th day of May, 2014, by the Honorable Lewis Reed, President Board of Aldermen, Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman 1st Ward, adopted this 9th day of May, 2014, and bank. At this time, I would like to present, they have a lot of special, wait, they have a lot of special people who are here that are Deltas, but I'm going to present this to, okay, wait a minute, the President's on the, I'm on the wrong.[764.12][764.12](laughter) Sorry. The President of the Deltas, and to say how thankful we are that you, every year come down here and remind us of our civic duties and that you're involved in the city and how privileged we are to have so many of you beautiful black women. I am honored.[779.23][779.23](laughter)
Thank you. Thank you.[782.23][782.23](applause) Good morning. My name is Kim Banks, and I'm the President of the St. Louis Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And on behalf of the over 300 members of the St. Louis Alumni Chapter, I would just like to say that we truly and deeply appreciate this honor coming from the President of the Board of Aldermen. Um, like has been said already, this is our 16th annual Delta Day at St. Louis City Hall. And so this is something that we take very seriously. And at this time, I would just like to kind of acknowledge two of our elected officials that are Deltas, and one would be Soror Mavis Thompson, who is the City License Collector,[823.73][823.73](applause) and who is also a member of the St. Louis Alumni Chapter, along with Tashara Jones, who is the City Treasurer, who is a member of the St. Louis Metropolitan Alumni Chapter.[838.56][838.56](applause) And I would also like to acknowledge our new incoming President, Soror Michelle Price.[844.82][844.82](applause) So again, on behalf of the entire membership of the St. Louis Alumni Chapter, we are very appreciative of this resolution, and thank you very much.[854.63][854.63](applause)
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to take a moment. I, I know I recognized you all earlier, uh, in the morning, but I want to thank you all for your service to our city. Um, the 25th Ward is home to a lot of very proud Deltas, and, um, I am so happy to have them as neighbors. Um, you all, throughout your service and your time with the sorority, really engender a, a lot of goodwill towards our community and really help raise the spirits of a lot of young women in our communities as well. And I can't tell you how much that means to me as someone who, you know, tries to advocate for young people in our community on a daily basis. And so, um, you all set a really marvelous example for young women in our communities, and I applaud you for that and thank you for your service to our community and to our city. Thank you.[913.86][913.86](applause)
Yeah, that's it. That's all. That's all. Any further, not, any further, any further discussion? Further discussion? I also want to add, uh, you know, my thanks and comments to the Deltas. Again, I thank you enough for all that you do. You know, one of the things that I think is important for people to note is when you, when you, the Deltas continue to live out your mission and your, and your, and your vision of what makes a better community and what makes a better United States and City of St. Louis, uh, you end up changing people that you run into. Uh, and they say, you know what? Guess what? Uh, a, a woman should make the same as a man, right? They say, guess what? Now the Deltas have put a woman in outer space. I mean, you guys have broken so many barriers, but what you do during that process is you educate others. So I cannot thank you enough for that as a father of four with two daughters that I, I hope and wish for every day that they, they grow up and be all that they can be. And I know the Deltas have, have done a great job of paving that road to make it possible. Again, I thank Alderwoman Tyus enough, uh, for taking up this resolution and making sure that Deltas are recognized in the way you should be recognized at this Board of Aldermen. And Delta Days is a great day in St. Louis. What do you guys think? Delta Days is a great day. Let's give them round of applause.[1005.13][1005.13](applause) And as you know, and I've said it many times before to you, the resolution is the highest honor the board has to give. And what it does is that it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when they take a look at the state of the City of St. Louis and they see the turnaround and everything, they will know the role that the Deltas played in that turnaround. So I'm indeed honored to, uh, be part of making sure that that record is committed every year to the City of St. Louis's permanent records of the city. Thank you.[1042.08][1042.08](applause)
Take a pitch. Oh, take a pitch. Down. Come on. George. Make sure you got her. Okay. You have to go around. 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 Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt our cursory resolution. Can I, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 33, sponsored by Alderman Bosley. The Board of Aldermen convened hearings for the purpose of examining the events, conditions, and circumstances surrounding the Carver Carburetor cleanup.
Alderman from the 3rd, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number 33.
May I ask the clerk to read the resolution, please? There are a lot of them missing off of the desk, and I couldn't understand why. That's reading, I ask you to read it.
I, I have to give.
It should be on everybody's desk.
Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 33. Whereas Carver Carburetor was founded in 1909 and closed in 1985, whereas Carver Carburetor site is owned by AMEC, a major international company, company. Whereas Carver Carburetor was located at Grand at St. Louis Avenue in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood of the 3rd, 3rd Ward. Whereas while open, Carver Carburetor supported countless small businesses and organizations in the area. And whereas after 10 years, whereas after years of fighting against cleaning the site and removing all of the cancer-causing materials and the buildings filled, the federal government and federal courts have forced the site owner, AMEC, to clean up the site. And whereas the unemployment rate among African-American men in St. Louis has been, has been as high as 34%. And whereas AMEC is refusing to make any commitments as it relates to the utilization of minority and women-owned companies. Whereas AMEC will not release the actual level of dollars it will spend with minority and women-owned firms. And whereas AMEC has not formally made known what plans it has for the disposition of the fully remediated land once the cleanup is completed. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we direct the Ways and Means Committee of this board to convene hearings for the purpose of examining events, conditions, circumstances surrounding the Carver Carburetor cleanup, with particular emphasis on the economic impact the project may have on the surrounding area of the site. We further direct the committee to include in such discussion all parties, individuals, and documents deemed appropriate and necessary by the Ways and Means Committee to conduct a fair and thorough examination. Introduced on the 9th day of May, 2014, by Honorable Freeman Bosley Senior, Alderman of the 3rd Ward.
Alderman from the 3rd, you recognize.
Mr. President, I ask that we send Resolution 33 to the Ways and Means Committee so that we can come up with all the information necessary for the people who don't know what this means to have an opportunity to have information.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd that we assign Resolution Number 33 to Ways and Mean. Seconded by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution Number 33 to Ways and Means.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
We will dispense with line item 23. Miss Lane has unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Monday, Health Committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. in McKennedy Room, Room 208, Health Committee meeting. Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in Room 208, the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m., Room 208, Kennedy Room. Please see, the schedule is attached. Also on Thursday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in Room 208, the Kennedy Room. Also on Thursday, Thursday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 10:00 a.m. to discuss Board Bill 41 also. Board, on Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 17th.
May I make an announcement, or before I do the excuse Alderman? Is it appropriate?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say that we had a, a meeting of the HUDs Committee this last week. We, uh, took up several bills, but in addition to that, we began a discussion about development incentives and how we're using them throughout the city. And my committee has authorized me to form a work, a, a, a work group of city officials to begin reviewing that. It's, uh, my intent as committee chair to kind of keep business as usual for right now as far as how we respect the aldermatic courtesy and, uh, the various incentives that come before our committee. But I would hope that perhaps some of our findings from this work group, we might be able to develop some consensus on going forward that would, that would, um, um, give us, um, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what, uh, the words I'm looking for, uh, but, but, but would create some criteria that would be objective enough that, that we could perhaps begin nibbling away a little bit at some of the, uh, some of the incentives and, and perhaps a little bit at the aldermatic courtesy, frankly, to take some of the heat off of all of us who, who get leaned on to, uh, to go ahead and do it. to take some of the heat off of all of us who get leaned on to go ahead and do it. But in any event, we're just starting that process. I don't anticipate any immediate changes in that. I'd like to complete the, the study and share some of the things that, some of our ideas with everyone before we go ahead and begin making any radical changes in how we view things. So I just wanted to let you know that that was going on. And we will be looking for some support from various departments heads. My entire committee thought it was a good idea, and I'm counting on the various departments to lend us the personnel necessary for us to achieve our, our job. So I just wanted to go ahead and announce that before I do the excuse Alderman, but I guess there's a couple other announcements.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 20th.
Members of the board, I realize that at this point, most people have tuned out. I should probably see if anybody's paying any attention. We have scheduled, as you noted, the clerk noted, that we have scheduled a Health and Human Services meeting on Monday. It's at 10:00 a.m. I try to avoid doing that, but we've had a lot of Ways and Means meetings and so forth. The major purpose for that, in addition to the $750,000 grant for Human Services for the reentry grant, is because Dr. Purnell is going to give us sort of a pre-presentation for the sake of all in terms of health and African-American population within the City of St. Louis. There's a lot of work that's gone into this. The fact of the matter is that when they're unveiling this plan, it's going to be when we're meeting here on a Friday morning at the Missouri History Museum on the 30th, and I don't want us to have a reason not to be exposed to this and have an understanding of this, have opportunities to meet with the good doctor and hear this presentation and begin the dialogue that's necessary as a, as a part of this. So Monday morning at 10, all aldermen are invited to come to this. I want to make sure that everybody knows about that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Also, I was just handed a note about the Tower Grove Better Block Project. It's going to be held at 3,200 Morgan Ford in Tower Grove South this Saturday, Saturday, May 10th, from noon to 4:00. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce that the 1st Ward will be having a meeting at the United House of Prayer at 3,300 North Kings Highway on Saturday, what is the 17th of May, between 10:00 and noon, and everybody to come to it. We'll have another meeting the 24th at Jevon's, which is at New Sunny Mount Baptist Church, because as I said last week, our ward is so long now that we kind of have to have two ward meetings, so everyone is in a place that's near to them, and they can kind of walk meeting, or at least is close if, if they need to get a ride or whatever. We welcome all the people to come and participate. We have some important information, important business that we will be discussing.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In the 16th Ward, this Saturday at Francis Park is the Francis Park Cleanup, so please come join us as we clean up the park. And then on Wednesday is the Southampton Neighborhood Association General Membership Meeting that starts at 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we excuse the Alderwoman from the 19th and the Alderwoman from the 28th.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 9th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn till next Friday.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, entertain a second on that motion. This time, I'm giving it to the Alderman from the 12th. Seconded by Alderman from the 12th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we stand adjourned.